Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Alderman Taylor, Alderman Crowe Kramer, Alderman Osheski, Alderman Zalinski, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Benner, Alderman Nichols. Alderman Keenan has been excused.
The first item on the agenda tonight is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment this evening? Sure, whoever gets there first.
As you know, my name's Joe Paulzine. I'm the Code Enforcement Specialist for the City of Manassia. I just want to take a couple moments here to first thank Chief Steika Pegasteno for all the effort they put in when I submitted my request for a review or survey of my salary. I would then like to thank the Personnel Committee for putting up with me two weeks ago with all the questions and comments that I made and for sending this before the City Council with their recommendation. I understand that this is not the amount that was pre-arranged or whatever in the budget, but I do believe that the salary increase that has been proposed will definitely show me that the City Council and the City of Manassia recognizes and appreciates the work I've done over the last eight years. I'd also like to, I know there were some questions and there were a couple councilmen that weren't available the last time, so I will be here in the event you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to direct before me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well deserved. I think you should have the opportunity for everything you just said. But in regards to the job, during the budget meeting last year, five of the eight council members voted against it. The mayor didn't have it on his budget. I don't see why you'd put it in now. It would be a kind of a quirky time because it looks like maybe some headlines or something different, a perk or whatever. I think it could be stayed for one more meeting and then done because it's going to be passed anyway, but it should be stayed for one more meeting. I hope the guy gets everything he's got coming. I think it should have been here a few years ago. And the only other thing, I'd like to know who the human resource person is in the City of Manassia. Really, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the Report of Department Heads Staff and Consultants. We have the minutes and communications to accept this evening. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Items, items A through K received and placed on file.
Is there a second? So motion is second to receive, no, to accept the minutes and communications. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the Consent Agenda. There are seven items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of March 21st. The Board of Public Works recommendations from March 21st, including the change order of Binton Construction on Contract Unit 2016-1, the downtown walkway and electrical improvements. It's a deduct of $3,645.58. The authorization to execute Wisconsin DOT Bridge Operation Agreement for fiscal year 2017. The Wisconsin DOT 441 Racine Street Landscaping and Aesthetics Ballot. Option 1, planter and splitter islands with ability to select the type of planting that best suits the city's needs and is within allowable parameters established by the DOT. Option 2, pocket park without picnic area and sidewalk connection, selecting the natural stone veneer option for the entrance feature wall and including the flag display in the entrance feature wall. The Personnel Committee recommendations from March 21st, including the recommended wage schedule, including step increases for the position of Administrative Assistant Public Works, and the Community Development Department reorganization, including the following: A, establishing the building inspector housing specialist position in the city's table organization and authorizing the hiring of the position at grade 20 with a pay range of $47,801 to $58,412. B, authorize changing the title of the existing code enforcement officer to code enforcement specialist and authorizing, changing the pay grade from 1753 to 2191 per hour to 1898 to 2377 per hour. And C, authorizing the transition of the code enforcement officer specialist from the Police Department to the Community Development Department. And finally, the NINA Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendation from March 22nd for the purchase of the Enforcer Forceable Entry Simulator from the Enforcer LLC for a cost not to exceed $8,670. Are there any items anyone would like separated this evening? Seeing no one, if we could have a motion for the consent agenda. Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the consent agenda approval.
Is there, there's a motion and a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for March 24th through March 31st. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 24th to March 31st, 2016, in the amount of $1,052,489.43.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators licenses, applications for the 2015 through 17 licensing year. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed in the Police Department's memo dated March 30th, 2016.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 3 is the NINA Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Fire Commission recommendation to approve and allow Chief Ochscher to sign the Regional Fire Department Hiring Process Agreement with Fox Valley Technical College effective March 11th, 2016, through March 10th, 2017. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to allow Chief Ochscher to sign the Regional Fire Department Hiring Process Agreement with Fox Valley Technical College.
Is, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 4 is the right of first refusal for Germania Hall, 320 Shute Street. Is there a motion or does anyone have questions about this? Did I skip one? No, okay. Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, I have some questions. Greg, could you elaborate on this a little bit? I'm a little bit surprised.
Yeah, well, as indicated in the memo, we, or me perhaps not, part of the purchase agreement for the southern portion of the Germania lot included the grant of a right of first refusal to the city for purchasing the balance of the property. And the owners now have received at least notice of intent or a letter of intent indicating the desire of these parties to acquire the property. And so we are in a position now where we need to respond to our right of refusal option and either exercise sending the notice to the sellers that it is our intention to proceed with acquisition or to decline acquisition at this time.
Who initiated this?
We received this from Bob Dove from BDD Holdings.
Would we be interested in any way?
Well, we had, I think, a fairly thorough discussion of this back when we were considering buying a portion of the lot. And at that time, I believe the council took action to direct us not to acquire the property in its entirety.
What's your recommendation now?
I don't feel that we have a need for this additional territory at this time. And it appears that we have a viable business entity that's willing to move back into that facility and put it back to productive use. So I would be in favor of not exercising our right of first refusal.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
So there's a motion to decline our ability to exercise a right of first refusal? Is that something to that effect? I forgot what you said by the time I got there. Okay, is there further discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, do we know what's going in there?
We do not know what's going in there. The only thing that I can relate to you is that Bob Dove told me we would be pleased with the occupancy of the building.
Okay, so now that we own the parking lot, do we know what the parking situation's going to be like?
Well, I mean, the buyers have been made aware of that scenario. And the scenario is, if you'll recall, that McCrone has the right to use the parking lot from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And then it would be operated similar to the other city parking lots outside of those hours. So it would be available for public parking outside of those hours. We will be bringing some ordinance amendments forward that would establish, you know, the hours, whether it's going to be two-hour and overnight and all that kind of business for that parking lot, as well as we have to acknowledge some changes to the Broad Street Lot and Shute Street Lot. So there's quite a number of changes that we're going to be bringing forward relative to our parking lot provisions in the next month or two.
Okay, because one of my concerns with that is I assumed that that was the direction we were going, but then if it's Supper Club type thing or something like that, a lot of times you get people parking overnight in the lot or cleaning people, working later, coming in early. I was concerned about us having the lot ready in the morning as far as snowpalling goes and things for McCrone to use it.
Well, in, for example, Shute Street Lot, we do restrict parking there between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m.
Okay.
So that would be our window to get in there and do that maintenance work.
Okay, those were my concerns. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Kyle, are they looking at the same, the same use and also having a, with the liquor license and things?
I did not discuss the business plans and he was not in a position to, you know, do that either, so.
And is it the same use?
As far as I know, but I, you know, it would, it is a similar type of use to what had been there.
So I don't know how the neighborhood would respond to if it's just going to be a bar and have a, compared to a Supper Club or a restaurant type of thing. So it's residential homes, both sides, three sides of it.
Well, and that use is allowed in the C2 district, so we'll just have to see how this plays out and what changes are proposed. Again, he felt that this would be a good fit for the property and, you know, sort of, those guys have had a commitment to Manassia, so I'm confident that representing.
Well, they haven't been doing a good job in the neighborhood because they let semis park in their parking lot during the weekend. And they leave the motors running out. I had to call the Police Department last Sunday, and I don't think any of those owners would want a semi parked next to their house with a motor running all night long, so.
Were they informed of that being there?
The Police Department was, so I would hope so.
But, yeah, whether they actually.
And they said it's a courtesy that they let the semi park in their lot, you know, and it's just, you know, Easter Sunday, have a semi parked next door to your house with the motor running. That's not too. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 5 is a notice of termination of Valley Marine Mart lease. Do we have a motion or discussion on this one as well? Alderman Benner?
I'll make a motion for discussion. Motion to approve the notice of termination of Valley Marine lease at 100 Water Street.
Is there a second? Okay, there's. There's a motion and a second. Do we have questions or did you want Director Kyle to explain what's going on? Director Kyle, did you want to explain a little beyond, I guess, what your memo says here?
Sure. Okay, so as you know, we've had discussion now for quite some time concerning the parking pressure in the, in the Broad Street relative to the Trestle Trail. And that has prompted some discussion among the Park and Rec Department and others to, you know, see what kind of opportunities exist to address that scenario. And since the city owns this property and since it is in proximity to the Trestle Trail, it was perceived that this might be a location where we could take some of that pressure off the on-street parking, put it in a place that would be convenient for the trail users, and then enable them to have access to the trail from that parking facility. So we roughed out a concept there for how it might work and were, at the moment, considering the area that's west of the boat launch site there. And we'd have a dozen or 13 parking stalls there. Our lease arrangement with Valley Marine provides for annual lease renewal, except upon 60-day prior notice to lease termination. That lease runs from July 1st to June 30th. And so this notice is being sent in order to afford us the opportunity to evaluate this parking scenario further and then perhaps execute upon a plan that would enable, you know, the creation of some parking there, whether it's 13 or, or something other than that. That could be a matter of discussion. I did meet with Mr. Bowdaway from Valley Marine Mart today. He did express concerns about this taking that area, having a major negative impact on his business. Perhaps there are some opportunities to kind of move things around a bit and satisfy both our desire to have additional parking as well as meet his business needs.
Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, I had a few questions on that. You kind of touched on the edge of something I was thinking about because we probably need that parking more in the summer. And he probably doesn't need that lot more in the summer if there is a chance of doing some sheer use on it. Was that discussed at all or considered?
I would defer to Mr. Bowdaway's use of that property, but in our discussion today, it seemed like the summer was a critical time as well because there's a lot of movement, taking boats in and out of his repair facility, testing them and so forth.
Okay. The other thing was, I was kind of curious on the timing because this hasn't gone to the Plan Commission yet or the Park Board. And so neither, again, the Plan Commission or the Park Board had a chance to discuss this. And we're going forward with sending a notice to terminate the lease, and we're not even sure if that's something that.
Well, I mean, all this is, all this is, is notice. It's not saying that we're never going to lease all or part of this property again. But in order to give us the ability to go through that process and, and have something implemented in 2016, we need to send that notice now.
And we need to do that now because we just really haven't planned, and I want to say this delicately because I don't mean anything negative by it, but we haven't planned that far enough ahead as to where we would have been talking about this in, say, January or February at the Plan Commission and the Park Board.
And kind of what's brought this to the fore is the loop-de-loop, that second trail and the discussion of the parking needs associated with that. And, you know, this then kind of came to the fore and we're kind of kicking at it now rather than, you know, it would have been nice maybe a few months earlier. But it seems like there's still time between now and July to kind of come together with a feasible plan for the use of that area.
Okay. But he understands the intent of why we're doing this, just so that the discussion can go forward and it may or may not happen, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. So this is kind of a chicken or egg thing?
Yeah.
Do you bring it before the council to see if the council wishes to terminate that lease first? Or do you bring it before the Plan Commission to see if the Plan Commission's interested in that use?
Yeah, and ideally.
So this gives us flexibility, is what we were thinking.
I just think ideally it would have been nice to talk about it internally first before it went down that path. But that's just my mindset. But I understand it and I think it's a fair thing to do is that at least we can responsibly have the, have the discussion within the appropriate committees, so.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll stick by my motion for this with that understanding that we still may be able to work something out, but.
And I think that's our intention. I spoke with Mr. Bowdaway this afternoon as well. I don't know if Greg knows that or not, but we talked about that as well, just working together on a, a plan that hopefully will accommodate both uses.
Yeah, I hope so. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Kyle, how, how formal would we be doing these parking stalls? Would we be putting in hard surface and stops for the vehicles?
It would be hard surface. And I don't know whether we would put curbing in or not. That would be, we haven't gotten that far in the planning process.
I think if the, some of the stalls face the river, I think there should be a stop if a child or something inadvertently pulled a gear shift in the way they go into the river. So I think that should be considered at some point, too. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I spoke with Mr. Bowdaway as well this afternoon, and we had a discussion about his concerns regarding the cutting back of the number of, or the amount of space available to him for his storage. And he also understands that the city is interested in doing something else with the property that he leases at the moment. And so I struggle with this because we have a business operating within the City of Manassia and we also have a neighborhood that has concerns as well. At the same time, Mr. Bowdaway indicated that he, at least to me anyway, that he is willing and open to discussing different options regarding the leasing of the city property. And so I would like to offer an amendment to your motion and to have it include that we, that the city will also begin the negotiation of a new lease with Valley Marine Mart that then will be up for consideration by the council at a later date. Just, and the reason for my including that is to, it's intend, it's intended, Director Kyle said it was intended to be part of the process at this point. And the mayor indicated that he had discussions with Mr. Bowdaway about that as well. It's also listed in the memo that, that it is the expectation that we would negotiate a new lease. And so I'm offering that amendment to make sure that we are on the same page.
Need to turn that on. You would like to make an amendment that the city begin negotiations of a new lease with Mr. Bowdaway to be brought before the council at a later date?
Yes.
Good? Okay, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the amendment then at this time? Alderman Zalinski?
Isn't this incorporated into the whole thing of?
It, it kind of is, but.
Yeah, so why do we got to add another amendment to it? It's already incorporated in there. We're going to be discussing the lease and going forward with that.
Alderman Nichols? I'm sorry, I didn't see you like that.
That's okay. Even though that was the expectation going forward in discussions with Mr. Bowdaway this afternoon, I felt that it was important to just put forth that good faith effort, that good faith as a council to say that, you know, since he's willing to work, to come to the table and work out an agreement, that we are as well.
Alderman Taylor?
Broad Street splits Alderman Nichols and my district. And I'm certain if you let the neighborhood know that there's an opportunity for more parking, they would like to be informed about that. And I'm sure they would be here championing at cause. So there's many more people involved except just this one entity at this point. So certainly I think it's a larger, larger matter than just a single business. It's also a lot, lot of residential homeowners.
Any further discussion on just the amendment? There's no further discussion. Oh, go ahead, Marshall.
I would say the value of the amendment, in my opinion, is it reinforces our intent to negotiate. And I think we, and with respect to a business in our community, it's worthwhile doing that, even though it's somewhat redundant to what we already have.
Any further discussion then on the amendment? If not, we'll take a roll call vote on just the amendment at this point?
Motion carried on roll call 6-1.
And we have the motion as amended on the floor at this point. Alderman Zalinski?
Greg, I'm surprised I'm hearing this, that we're having problems down there with parking. Thought everything was all rosy. What are the issues with the parking?
I don't know who represented that things are all rosy. I think.
Well, after the trail meetings with all the other trails, we didn't need parking. Everything was good. What are the issues? What are the neighbors saying?
Well, I haven't, I haven't heard anything directly from any of the neighbors, but I've heard a lot from other people who claim that there's a parking issue there. I've seen that, you know, there's quite a lot of street parking. The six or seven stalls that are there are frequently filled. There's, you know, quite a lot of on-street parking. And as we move forward and try to promote the use of this Trestle Trail and hopefully try to attract more of those trail users into our community, that we'll be seeing more, more parking demand. And we're trying to see if we can address it by using property that we already have control of.
I agree that we should be addressing it, but maybe we should be making it closer to the trail. Now we're just going to be pushing it into another neighborhood. And the six or seven that we're going to, or 10 spots we're going to add really isn't going to change a whole lot because they're going to park closest to the trail that they can possibly park. If they're going to be using the trail, if we start adding parking down there, then we're going to have the fisherman problem. And that's, that's going to open a whole new can of worms for Valley Marine is the fishing.
Well, then the suggestion would be that we'd be acquiring some additional property down there? Is that what you have in mind?
That's basically what I'm saying. This, that's what I, I knew there was a parking problem a long time ago, but when we were talking about trails, we, we kind of just glossed over that and there was no problem. And that's why I was pushing for parking on the new trail that's coming in. The parking should be closer to the trail, trailhead, not pushing it further into another neighborhood. neighborhood. I'd like to hear from the residents in that neighborhood what the issues are, because a lot of people are afraid to bring that stuff forward.
So, I guess we should reiterate that this isn't committing us to build any parking. All that this is doing is giving us an opportunity to discuss if this is a good area to put parking or something else, or do we want to do something else with that property. And in July, we may decide we want to lease it exactly how we did before and not do anything, but this gives us that opportunity to discuss it within the committees, like Alderman Benner was saying, and bring it before the neighborhood and talk about this, and see if this is the right spot.
I agree with Mr. Benner on that. That was, this thing should have, should have been brought to the Park Board and other committees before, or Planning Commission before it even came here for this, just to rile up things and...
Any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
With the closure of the locks, maybe this would be a new marina, that distressed property down there, and Valley Marine will host the marina or something, so I think we could think, we could think big on this, too. Certainly, Valley Marine has been an institution in the city of Manasha for many, many years, and I think this gives us a little leeway to work with them, and as time develops and projects develop, I think it's a, it's a good policy.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six-one.
Item J is held over business. It's Resolution R-1916. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Given that this is a budget adjustment item that requires a two-thirds vote, and we do not have full attendance this evening, and I think it's important that a full council vote on these sorts of items, I'm moving to table this item.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, and did you say tabling is non-debatable? Yes, okay, so the motion is non-debatable. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call six-one.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Item one is O-116, amending Title XI, Chapter II of the Code of Ordinances relating to disorderly conduct. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for approval of ordinance O-116 and ordinance amending Title XI, Chapter II of the Code of Ordinances for disorderly conduct.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Kevin, did you have more discussion?
I just had a comment that the only reason this is here is to comply with state statutes, and it's not necessarily something that I'm in favor of. It's just a matter of making sure that we're, that we are conforming with state statutes by our ordinance.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven-zero.
Item L is appointments. There is a council appointment on the agenda this evening of Anton Tynes for the remaining portion of the term for the Water and Light Commission that is currently open. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Alderman Crocker?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Anton Tynes, 1840 Northridge Court, Manasha, to the Water and Light Commission for the term of 4/5, 2016, through 10/1, 2020.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item N. This is Greg's last council meeting, and I just wanted to take a moment to go through a little bit of a trip down memory lane, and it's not in order, unfortunately, but just some of the things that Director Kyle has done, and how the community has changed a little bit over time. When I first met Director Kyle, I actually was a summer intern at East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and had worked with him a little bit, but I was mostly out in the field. And Greg came here as a Plan Commission member, and that was how he got introduced to the city, and we hired him off the Plan Commission, just like we hired Kira a few years back, and I think some of our best hires were from the Plan Commission. But Greg's been involved in a lot of different things throughout the years, and it's pretty amazing to start thinking what Manasha would look like without all the things that he did. I just have a short list, it's only a page long, but the McCrone Building right here behind us, and the city square that went along with that, and the Manasha 2000 project that helped with the mural in the square. The Marina Place Apartments and condos in Headwater brought a lot of new residential things to the downtown and created that next dimension to our downtown. Right now, we have one Manasha center just about ready to open. We have three grocery stores that came to fruition during the time that Greg was here, Festival, Third Street Market, and what was Cub Foods, and now Piggly Wiggly. Huge amount of development on the east side with Lake Park Villas, the ponds, the cottages, Woodland Hills, Silver Birch, and probably a couple more that I'm missing in there. The East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission offices over on the Gilbert site. We saw some huge changes at UW Fox with the dorms, the Fox Village dorms, the new theater, the engineering expansion over there. Some great things with housing at Nature's Way and Mission Village. Affinity moving over along our business park corridor over there. Redevelopment of the Ark, the Winnebago Day School on the island, which has its first new home, and will have four new homes there. The Resene Street development, including First National Bank. Things going on on the Gilbert site that still is a work in progress. Expansion of Culveris that was Peniche, I believe, at that point. Advanced Toolings' expansion, Alpha Prime's expansion, Simply Incredible Foods coming to Manasha. The whole Manasha Business Park and United Papers' expansion in that area, Appenasha, Swim Castics, and numerous other things. The expansion of the Manasha Library, the Senior Center, the Boys and Girls Club, the trestle trail, and numerous other things. Kevin was supposed to get me a list of all the committees you serve on, too, and he didn't, so I only have a couple, but I know that you've really enjoyed serving on the Wisconsin Lakes Council, and especially serving on the Lake Park Villas Homeowners Association. Helped us out with the regional partnership as well, serving on some committees there and working on those things. We're really grateful for your last donation here, as you've been cleaning out your office, too. We saw some great donations to the free little library out in front of City Hall, and we were able to find some more brown spaces on his desk after that, so. I mean, Manasha would be a very different place without you, and we really thank you for all the things that you've helped us achieve over these twenty-some years that you've been here with us. I don't know if anyone on the council would like to add anything to that? Oh, I'm Dan, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Greg. I'm jealous you're beating me out of here.
Kevin?
I just want to say that with serving on the Plan Commission, and I've known Greg, probably close to twenty years now, but certainly in the last eight years, got to know him quite a bit better. And as somebody who works in government, it's, a lot of times, it's a very thankless job, and people question what you're doing, and when you're trying to create a vision for a city, and to do things differently as we've done, and even right up till tonight, continuing to persevere with that, takes a lot of energy and a lot of long hours. You know, you think about him coming in here at eight in the morning, or sooner, and being here till ten o'clock at night, sometimes midnight with some of our meetings and stuff, coming back in here and kind of starting it all over. Sometimes taking what is some, taking some criticism from some pretty passionate people and to continue to come in and work diligently in the best interests of the city. Certainly commend Greg for everything that he's done, and the city would be a lot different without him, and sad to see you go.
Go ahead, Mark. Oh, no, not at all.
I want to echo what you and Kevin and Dan have said, and Greg has his finger in many different projects and different departments, and there's no one that I can think of that is more willing to help everyone, and he'll do it at, not at his convenience, but with an understanding of what the priorities are, and I really appreciate that very much. He's just an outstanding employee and coworker, very knowledgeable on many different subjects, and as staff knows, things are always looking up when Greg is in the room. Thank you, Greg. Good luck and good health in your retirement.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you and getting to know you, and I hope retirement treats you well.
Will?
Just a quick thank you for what you've done for our community, and the one major concern that I had the first day, shuffled a few papers and talked to people for me, and I appreciate that. It seems to have calmed things down at this point, so thank you very much for all you've done.
Tina?
I just want to wish you the best of luck. We've only been able to interact a few months, but wow, what an impressive list, and I'm glad the rest of Manasha gets to hear that, so you should be very proud of it, and best of luck.
James? Oops, I'm sorry. Marshall? I saw him press the button, but you already had yours on.
Not much left to say after what's been said. I just like to echo all of that, but also, I've been retired for a few years now. Come on in, the water's fine.
I like that.
James?
Thank you. Greg, block after block in our downtown has been transformed, and thanks to all your hard work and dedication to the city of Manasha. A man a walk boy traveling to college to Oshkosh, you probably never knew you were going to have that much change in our city. You know, I won't say how many years later, from college days, it's great to see, to see the change. Your thoughtfulness, professionalism, our debates, I appreciate you always trying to sell what you believed in or thought of. Sometimes we don't agree on everything, but that's the whole process up here, is the give and take, and I'd just like to say thank you, enjoy your retirement, and I hope you come back as a consultant and get the pay that you deserve, so. Don't feel afraid to come back and work on a project or two if we ask you, and I see it all the time where I work, and then they make the big bucks, and in a little bit too fashion, to help, help finance your retirement a little more. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Since we're on track to have a brief council meeting, I won't try to derail that with any extended comments. I would just like to let you all know that I really appreciate my opportunity to work here in the city of Manasha and be able to be a part of all of the change that has occurred. And I just have to acknowledge that, you know, change isn't brought about by any one person. It comes from collaboration and cooperation, working with all the departments, public works in particular. We spend a lot of time hashing through things and trying to make things work in an expedient way. The city attorney, countless hours on these development agreements and all the minutia that's involved with that. Ryan's Park and Rec programs, Nancy's Health program, Tim's parking, code enforcement, the whole gamut of things, so. Fire department coming in with some of the inspection things, so we really do our best when we work together and try to find common solutions, and I think the progress that has been shown here in Manasha is largely a result of those, those kind of cooperative efforts. So, thank you for allowing me to be part of it.
Did you want us to make one word comment?
Yes, I'm going to give him one word present. I'm not going to ask any questions.
So, one last comment. Debbie already has Greg roped in to be a consultant on the board of Canvas, which is an unpaid position, so we already have one thing that's going on, and I did want to also mention that we spent a lot of hours together with the finance department, especially working on some of the Lake Park Villas and the ponds and some of those development agreements as well. So, it's been a great partnership, I think, with all the department heads. And with that, since you were looking for a short meeting, there is one last item, public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.